As the Secretary of the Maine Association of Dispensary Operators, and it is in that capacity that I am before you today testifying strongly in favor of LD-35. Maine's list of qualifying conditions for the use of medical cannabis includes a number of serious conditions and their symptoms which may at one time or another require hospital stay. There is no morally sound reason to deny continued access to a therapeutic plant medicine to these patients while they are hospitalized. Healthcare professionals are ethically required to take the action that is in the best interest of the patient. In the case of these patients who have already been using therapeutic cannabis, a doctor or nurse practitioner has already certified that the patient qualifies and may benefit from the use of medical marijuana. In these cases, there is neither a practical nor an ethically viable reason to cut off that patient's access to an herbal medicine at the very moment when they are experiencing a health crisis. We understand that a significant fear for hospitals is apparently potential loss of federal funding. However, to date, no hospital, no retirement home, no assisted living facility, or hospice in the nation has been targeted by any federal agency simply for allowing the responsible use of medical cannabis on-site. CMS appears to be taking a hands-off approach, neither looking for cannabis use during audits nor penalizing institutions that explicitly allow patients to use this herb. You might think that this is because none of these facilities allow such use, but that is mistaken. A handful of forward-thinking hospitals, retirement communities, and other facilities around the country and around Maine expressly allow medical cannabis use. And many more have a "don't ask, don't tell" approach where patients or residents use medical cannabis. However, "don't ask, don't tell" is not a health-positive policy. Secrets, stigma, and shame are unfair burdens for these patients and their families. The placement of cannabis in Schedule I of the Controlled Substances Act 45 years ago was politically motivated, and every day we learn more about how scientifically unsound that placement is. Hospitals, as providers of care for the most acutely ill among us, should not allow a bad law to excuse them from doing good on behalf of the patients they serve. In preparing these remarks, I reviewed the value statements of Maine's hospitals from Acadia to York, and I read words like "passion," "integrity," "respect," "quality," "education," "thoughtful," "loving kindness." Now, I don't know if we can legislate loving kindness, although it's nice to try. But whether you call it love, or compassion, or quality care, or just common sense, a patient who is benefiting from a natural plant therapy should not have that taken away from them during a health crisis, and certainly not by a facility that hopes to improve their well-being. LD-35 allows our excellent hospitals to demonstrate real leadership in this emerging healthcare policy arena. And again, on behalf of the Maine Association of Dispensary Operators, the thousands of seriously ill patients we serve, I urge you to think of them, think of your own family members, and think of perhaps yourself someday. And again, to strongly support LD-35. Thank you for your time. I would be happy to answer any questions, if you might.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all for being here and listening to the public opinion on both for in favor and against all of these bills. This is my first time here. My name is Darryl Goodrow. I'm a board member of MMCM, Medical Marijuana Caregivers of Maine. And we're here together as a group to speak positively about most of these here. Today, I'm going to speak on Number 23 and Number 35. I'm going to start with saying that Number 23, myself and MMCM very much supports this bill. Every year, Maine lawmakers review proposals to expand the list of qualifying conditions that they are allowed to approve the use of medical marijuana. Doctors and patients should have full control over their own medical treatments without undue government interference or intrusion. We know of no other medical treatment where the conditions for which a doctor may prescribe or recommend it are dictated by the government officials rather than the medical professionals. If an ill resident of Maine or their doctor determine that medical marijuana is the best treatment option, they should be able to access it. It is time to remove the state lawmakers from the relationship between the patients and their doctors. By removing the requirement that patients' condition should be debilitating, this proposal will be a step in the right direction. So we urge passage of LD-23. As for LD-35, MMCM also supports this bill. Patients who are hospitalized should not be restricted from using smokeless forms of This can be especially important for those treating epilepsy and seizures, or patients treating severe nausea and wasting. Again, if a sick person from Maine and their doctor determine that medical marijuana is the best treatment option for their condition, they should be able to access it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. For a first timer, you thought it was good behavior?
I don't know, it's short on time, so I got the revenue worth it.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Butler. I come from Lebanon, Maine, originally from Colorado. In 1968, I was diagnosed with what we call today ADDH D. I was on the forefront of the RCRD of those drugs. Nine years later, I stopped taking the drugs that they were giving me because they weren't really good. They were causing more problems with my schooling. I was about ready to drop out. Matter of fact, I did drop out because of them. I started smoking marijuana and eating marijuana and taking the extracts that we can get from that, which leads us to better medicine. In 1996, I had a son after having a full, successful life. I lived in the military, I got out of the military, I worked great for a long time, I had a son. He was diagnosed with ADDH D, given the drugs that they have today of Ritalin and all the other stuff. He gained weight, he was dying. As a parent, I looked at that and said, "I can't let my kid die. I can't continue to do this." I was forced to give him the drugs. We tried and tried and tried knocking. And finally, I said, "No, let's have him take some marijuana." When he was 12 years old, he ended up getting his GED. He was able to actually be social with other kids. Today, he works full-time. He enjoys life, he's lost lots of weight. I don't know what else to tell you. I've been trying to make anything that doesn't have to be debilitating. Why should we have to be dying or crippled to have to use a drug, you know, or a medicine that works for us? I don't get it. Please help us. Do what the state motto says: Be a leader. Take a stand, and let's take a lead for the whole country. We can do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Howdy, there. I am Dylan Medlin from down in Lebanon as well. I've been moving over to Union, I assume. Like this state, I've traveled all over. It's a sweet state, it's pretty awesome. I mean, you made it really good here, like, for really, you don't even know. And, you know, just the independence of people here, it's sweet. I'm not really here to speak in for or against, or I'm here to just take a statement, I'm writing with John Butler, so we're out here after this. But, you know, government, they need to pass some laws, some laws are silly, and you guys know that. You see it all the time, I'm sure. This is medicine, people like to use it as medicine, it's their right. People have been using it as medicine, medicine, for thousands of years, and keep giving that. You know, restrictions on people being able to use it for whatever reason medically they use it for. Nobody should be able to tell them no. Should be able to tell somebody, no. I mean, you know, my grandmother has glaucoma, she gets headaches all the time, she's been using it way before that, man, she's been using it way since like her twenties and whatnot, you know, headaches. You got, you know, sprain in your wrist or whatnot. It doesn't kill pain. It doesn't kill pain. That's inhuman to kill the pain, you're not ever going to do that. Pain's always going to be there. It helps you deal with it. Pharmaceuticals are destroying people. I'm from North Carolina, that's like the, that's one of the big states for pharmaceuticals, man, it's great down there, they're making lots of money. Lots of money off people, and they got a lot of people that abuse and use and, I mean, I don't think you guys realize, because you're from, you're here, you don't have it here. You don't have quite that problem, you know? Look at the death rates on pharmaceutical drugs down there, literally, the whole nation and whatnot. Look at how many people have died from marijuana. Hope this can pull up one. I'd love to see it, you know, but it's not there, and you know it. It's a safe drug. It's not even a drug, really not a drug, it's a medicine. You know, some people use it recreationally for them, but here in this room, we're all using it for medicine, you know? Yeah, that's it, that's it, that's all I got to say. Thank you guys for actually working, though, the empty seats bother me, but thank you guys for being here. Thank you very much. No, I'm not trying to make too light of that, but it's real, you guys are awesome people, these guys are awesome people, we're out of here, thank you very much. It's a lovely day in Maine.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to remind people that many of us have to go in and out of this room a lot because we need to be in other committees, in other bills, in other committees. It's reminding us that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Senator Brady and Representative Gatten, members of the Health and Human Services Committee. I'm John Waditz, I'm a family physician, I'm a faculty here in Augusta, the Maine Document for Presidency. I've been there since 1995, and I'm also Director of Integrative Medicine and the Training Program. I've been in clinical practice for 27 years. I'm here to speak to you in support of LD-35. This is an important topic for Maine residents. I've been a supporter of the use of medical marijuana since the first legislation was enacted in 1999. Since I have continued to certify patients by practice, many of them might have known for more than a 16-year period. Today, I have certified over 500 patients. We are already familiar with the benefits of marijuana, the abundance of scientific literature to demonstrate that marijuana has diverse clinical applications. It improves pain management, many patients reduce their use dependence on narcotics and side diseases, also relaxes in adjunct pharmaceutical therapies like tricyclic antidepressants. Patients are less likely to develop tolerance to prescription narcotics, they function in their daily lives better, thus improving their quality of life. In head-to-head trials, anti-nausea and anti-medic drugs like Compazine and Advacin, which you probably know as Zocan, marijuana is as good or better than the control of these symptoms. Appetitism is stored through its use, and chronically ill patients are able to maintain a gain rate. The benefits of marijuana extend far beyond these symptoms. Through my experience as a family physician, I have had the privilege to develop and talk with patients over their use of medical marijuana. In the last six years, since 2009, when the last referendum on medical marijuana was enacted, the number of people seeking certification has skyrocketed. The inclusion of chronic pain and the establishment of dispensaries increases access to care for a much larger group of individuals than in previous years. I have recorded the history of patients who clearly outline how their pain, for instance, is better controlled with marijuana. They lead more fulfilling lives, less pain, less cognitive impairment, and experience fewer side effects from marijuana than conventional medicines. In 2014, the legislature here in Maine also expanded the use of medical marijuana in hospice care. And in January of 2015, I attended a statewide meeting with the medical directors of hospice of Maine to explore how to implement these changes. Now it is time to discuss the expansion of medical marijuana in hospitals of Maine. Some would say the time is long overdue. I understand the challenges that this space may pose to hospital administrators. I have heard the arguments for many years from them as they explain their fear that the hospital licensure may be just jeopardized on the federal level. As this topic is debated and different views are presented here today, it is important to keep one principle in mind, that is, how we can best take care of patients. Let's not jeopardize the best approach to patient care because of a fear. I understand it is not substantial. I have spoken to many, as I have made many presentations across Maine. The risk management from a legal perspective cannot be the sole way to determine how to provide the best care for patients. I too have a federal DEA license and have, oh, for the last 16 years, been exposed to the same risks that hospitals espouse of the reasons that they have been reluctant to endorse the use of medical marijuana under their roots. It is clear that the federal government has not intervened in Maine to harass or withdraw federal licenses in large part because the law in Maine works very well. Last year, the federal budget agreement that the US Congress passed in November clearly indicated that the enforcement of federal government's hands-off policy to states with medical marijuana laws will occur as long as the states monitor and impose clear guidelines. No one really knows which physician wrote the first medical marijuana certification, it is no secret who we are. My name and many others appear at websites and are available through word of mouth and other databases. I know I have the support of the Maine Medical Association as I work closely with them as a consultant during the task force hearings in 2010. If the federal government wanted to take a statement, I have been a potential target for 16 years. It has not happened. From the patient perspective, let's remember that individuals who use marijuana regularly for symptom control will need hospitalization at some time in their lives.
So I'll start with asking you to keep that up.
Okay. So as I can tell you briefly, there's one administrator told me that no botanicals can be used in the hospital. I made it very clear that I've been doing it for over 10 years. And one of the concerns is, if we're not aware that people need botanical medicines like marijuana, we have to be comfortable with the idea that the clandestine use of medical marijuana occurs in every hospital across the state of Maine. I think this law is compassionate, I think it is sound medical judgment, and it is the right thing to do in the state of Maine for our purposes.
Thank you, Doctor, very much. Again, we will be, I appreciate it very much. Any questions? Representative Hatt.
Thank you, Doctor, for that so well. Did you have a position on LD-23?
Or for all the included? I've never been a great supporter of everything being included. I think that's a broad area for a deep discussion, and I think the medical profession in Maine is really not capable of having that discussion because they do not understand all the medical benefits of marijuana. So I like it precisely as it is right now, and if, you know, the legalization of recreational use of becomes, it's probably the best, I think, in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Any, oh, Representative, Representative Hatt.
Thank you. Good morning. I wonder about interaction with the drugs that are prescribed by the attending physician and the physician that would, they may not be the same physician. Is there any interaction with any drug that a hospital or an attending physician had opposed to the primary care person? Is there anything that we should be concerned about as far as interaction with other drugs? Drugs, not marijuana.
Well, there are definitely drug-herb interactions, and one of the reasons I write orders in the hospitals that go to the pharmacy is that they can check whether it's botanical or whether it's marijuana. There are databases that I use in my practice and all the physicians that Maine General have access to, and it's really working that relationship with the pharmacy to be sure we understand the interactions, because there are some serious ones.
My question would be, if you brought some in unbeknownst to the attending physician, then what happens? Is that the concern that the hospitals have?
Well, whether they acknowledge it or not, that this is occurring, I've told them for a long time, this happens regularly.
No, I'm sure.
But there's no way for them to really know. And yes, there can be interactions, but you know, mostly interactions are really to the few medicines, in particular, anti-seizure medicines, that can change the levels, you know, in the blood.
And that's what we're talking about with a lot of epileptic people. That's the only concern that I have, is that you might bring some in to a patient unbeknownst to the facility, that is, and that's scary as well. The parents need to be educated, oh, the person bringing it in needs to be educated as to what this patient is actually taking for whatever they're being treated for, and is there any interaction if I bring this to them for their comfort level?
Yeah. So phenobarb, benetron, and fentanyl for asthma and COPD are probably the, have the most risks associated with them. Probably most of the people who are using them, I would hope, know that if they're using procedures, it's not procedure alone, if they're not using it alone, seizure control, because that wouldn't be recommended.
Lots and lots of good stuff.
So I think education is always important for everyone, for patients and for medical staff in the industry.
I think that would be part of the hospital's concern, is the interaction. That's huge. To me, that's huge.
Oh, for sure.
Education before you, before you as an individual, bring it into a patient, know what it's doing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your question.
Representative Bursey.
Thank you, Dr. Jair. Good morning, Doctor. Do you foresee hospitals someday having this in their formulary so that their own pharmacies can prescribe, or are you just at this point, you know, patients are bringing their own in and locking up by their bedside like we saw in one of the other articles here?
For sure, I think there will be the day. I've been around long enough to know that we've come a long way since I graduated from medical school. I've never been that concerned about marijuana as a street drug, and so as a botanist and herbalist and integrative medicine practitioner, I'm open to all things. So I think it's very possible that that will happen at some time in the future, you know, whether, and hopefully it'll be medical marijuana that patients are out of control and not just another pharmaceutical as it is in other parts of the world.
Does any other state have marijuana already on-premise in the hospitals, in Colorado?
I don't know, I've asked that question of my colleagues who are into this across the country, and no one has ever been able to fully tell me that there's a hospital that allows it in a very organized way for patients to use it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for being here. I appreciate you being here and your candidness in saying that this is happening in hospitals behind the shadows already. But in building off what Representative Ted asked to, if this legislation were to pass, then that would probably make it easier because then you have the ability for full disclosure that you do have a medical marijuana patient, correct?
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Hey, so all you need to do a little bit of housekeeping, we're way over capacity in this room, which is not a good thing from a fire code perspective. Normally, we would try to set up an overflow room, and we'll continue to try and treat that, but we haven't been able to do that yet. So again, if you're not here for LD-5 and 23 and then LD-21 and 560, it is possible for you to wait out in the hallways, and I think we're going to be here all day. I imagine we're not going to get filled to LD-5 or 266 until, so after lunch. So again, it is possible for some folks who have either already testified or are going to be, or rather, going to be in the hallway there to wait out the hallway that we're in. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Teen. Great.
Also, I've been told that in the Hall of Flags right now, they're broadcasting, so people will know the Hall of Flags. It's on the second floor of the main building, it's the main area, so again, people can look over there if they would like, where they'll be able to hear the testimony, they'll also be able to hear, you know, when they're, they'll there, it's going to be heard. So another option for folks. Thank you. Now, Mr. Walker, what do you have to tell us?
Okay. Senator Breaking, Representative Teen, members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Dan Walker. I'm a lawyer right here in Augusta at Pratt &amp; Flaherty, and I am counsel for the wellness connection of Maine. And I testify today in support of LD-35. First of all, I just want to just say, first of all, this is my first time testifying this here before the committee around medical marijuana issues, that we very much respect the leadership of this committee, we respect the leadership of Senator Breaky for putting this in, Representative Sanderson, and Representative, Senator Haskell have done, shown tremendous leadership through the years on these issues. Maine law recognizes multiple medical conditions, as you've heard, that benefit from the use of medical marijuana. And as you've heard here today, medical marijuana treatment can be a very important part of these treatments, and especially in a lot of, for a lot of conditions where nothing else has worked. So not surprisingly, in many cases, these folks need to be hospitalized, obviously, from time to time when people's health deteriorates. And it's a great irony that the thing that helps them the most, they can't, they can't have it in the place that's also trying to help them. And I think, I was going to make the exact same point that Representative Sanderson picked up on, is that if you allow this to go forward, it's going, everything, what's already happening is going to be disclosed, things are in the open, people are going to better understand the interactions between these medicines. Now, from a legal perspective, we understand that Maine's hospitals have a number of concerns about this. They operate under heavy federal laws. They have concerns regarding the DEA, the FDA, the IRS, Medicare, and others, and of course, it's still listed under the Federal Controlled Substances Act as a Schedule I drug. Now, the big question for me is whether or not federal prosecutors will come in after doctors, hospitals, nursing homes, hospice, because they are providing this. However, there is federal guidance in, that we know of, attached to my, to my testimony is the Department of Justice memo from 2013, which states, and I think a lot of people are familiar with this, but take another read of it, that the federal government has and will continue to let state and local authorities handle investigations involving marijuana. It's a state issue. Now, in my research regarding this, I came across a memo that was authored by the Illinois Hospital Association in August of 2013, and that's also attached to my testimony, which analyzes this intersection between state and federal law. They, of course, make the initial conclusion that it violates, the use of medical marijuana in the state violates the Controlled Substances Act, but they move on from there. And usually, preemption doctrine means that federal law beats out state law. However, the Illinois Hospital Association thought differently. I'm just going to read this quote that I have here. "In the case of states such as Illinois that have decriminalized the use of medicinal marijuana, preemption has not been the case. State medical marijuana laws have been generally viewed as emanating from the state's traditional state police powers to control what behavior constitutes criminal conduct, and thus have been afforded a presumption against federal preemption. In addition, the federal government, under established Tenth Amendment principles, which is the state's rights amendment, is generally prevented from forcing states to enact similar criminal prohibitions, repeal medical marijuana exemptions, or direct state police officers to enforce federal laws." Now, I'm going to run out of time here, so I wanted to tell you where this, where my testimony goes, and you can follow it, is that the federal government already recognizes the efficacy of medical marijuana and its, and its use all around. Just look at the VA system. The VA system has been progressive on this, and I attach a number of articles, including some policy statements from the VA, but the VA physicians right now explicitly allow patients who are already participating in state medical marijuana programs cannot be denied VH, Veterans Health Services at the Veterans Hospitals or clinics. These patients must be permitted to continue with their veterans' healthcare, in substance abuse or pain control programs, even where marijuana may be considered inconsistent. So take a look at that, I think, just, and think about the idea that the federal government is already being progressive around this. Why wouldn't they be progressive with hospitals? I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Any questions? Thank you. We'll take the testimony in favor of five of these two bills. Good morning.
Good morning.
No, I don't have any to tell. Any written, any put written down? My name's Brandon Bowman. I'm a caregiver, I live in Frankfort. Thanks for having this committee and listening to public opinions about matters. You know, I didn't have a lot prepared for this, but it just seems pretty simple to me. The herb cannabis, it's just so useful for a wide variety of different ailments. I mean, you see it remove warts, you know, glaucoma, epilepsy. Just to say that only debilitating and chronic illnesses is right for it is just not true. And to hold it back from people that it could help, it's just, it doesn't make sense, you know? Laws that don't make sense tend to be broken, and, you know, we lose respect for the law. I don't like to see that necessarily not an anarchist. Rules that make sense. LD-35, using the medicinal marijuana hospital, it's medicine, and I believe the hospitals where medicine belongs. People are using it, they got a certification from their doctor, they knew what the, what, you know, what
in substance abuse or pain control programs, even where marijuana may be considered inconsistent. So take a look at that. I think just... And think about the idea that the federal government is already being progressive around this. Why wouldn't they be progressive with hospitals? I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Any questions? Thank you. So take the testimony in favor of these two bills. Good morning.
Good morning.
No, I mean, written. Are you putting it written down? My name is Brandon Bowman. I'm a caregiver. I live in Frankfort. Thanks for having this committee and listening to public opinions about matters. You know, I didn't have a lot prepared for this, but it just seems pretty simple to me. The herb cannabis, it's just so useful for a wide variety of different ailments. I mean, you see it remove warts, you know, glaucoma, epilepsy. Just to say that only debilitating and chronic illnesses is right for it is just not true. And to hold it back from people that it could help, it's just... It doesn't make sense, you know? Laws that don't make sense tend to be broken. And, you know, we lose respect for the law. I don't like to see that necessarily not an anarchist. To make rules that make sense. LD-35, using the medicinal marijuana hospital, it's medicine. And I believe the hospitals where medicine belongs. People are using it. They got a certification from their doctor. They knew what the... What, you know, what their ailments are. They told them it was okay to use marijuana. They would know if it was going to be bad for them. But anyways, you know, medical marijuana, medicine, hospital. It's about all I have. Just to keep it brief and honest, to the point. Thank you. Thank you for listening to my opinions.
Well, thank you for being here.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll... I think you're all set. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Jody Stevins, and I'm from Augusta. I'm here to speak in support of LD-35 because I feel it's fairly common sense. Of all places, you should be able to have access to your medicine in a hospital. I'm going to speak more on LD-23 because that means something for me. Mike, that has autism. He's on the autism spectrum. His current medication affects his heart rate, his blood pressure, his emotions. It's a roller coaster every day. And by removing the condition that the condition needs to be debilitating, would open this up so that I can bring the documented information from studies in California and studies overseas on cannabis with children with autism. It's done amazing things controlling the rage condition, the inability to communicate, and with eye contact. It also helps them focus on things that they genuinely wouldn't be able to focus on. It's a really incredible medicine for autism. And right now, autism isn't included on the list. I know that that's just one of the many, many non-d debilitating conditions that people have that this would be opened up to. But these are the people that you're going to be reaching. We're just on the other side of that line of debilitating. And it's going to make a huge difference in his health and in the longevity of his life because this medication will take years off his life. It's not good for his heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, some of these questions for Representative Sanderson.
Thank you. I want to thank you for coming in and sharing that because I know there's a lot of controversy over this with children with autism. Would you be willing to send some of the links to the reports and studies and case studies?
Absolutely. I can get that together and send it into the...
You can send it right to our clerk, and she will make sure all the committee members have that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paul T. McCarrier, and I am president of Legalized Maine. And even though we are focusing on the legalization of marijuana, we are also taking interest in any things that affect the medical marijuana program. Because medical marijuana is going to help be the transition to recreational marijuana, and they will continue to affect each other even after marijuana is legalized. This sheet has our positions on all of the bills that were being heard this morning, but for right now, for LD-23 and LD-35. We support the LD-23 because we believe that physicians have more knowledge about what is best for the patients than necessarily us, any of us here. I want to remind everybody that there are often times physicians recommend medication off-label. So for example, if you're going to be taking a flight to Shanghai and you really don't like flying, your doctor may recommend Ambien to you so you can get a couple of Ambien just to help you make it to the flight if you have anxiety of flying, like I do. So we really are in big, strong support of LD-23. And we also think that if that was allowed, it would allow for more research on how medicinal marijuana can help these specific conditions because I know right now that because marijuana is illegal federally and because it can only be recommended for certain conditions, it's providing a barrier for any sort of research on marijuana when it comes down to dosage, frequency, et cetera. On LD-35, I think everyone who's spoken before me has really hit on the important points. One point I do want to mention, though, is I think it is extremely important that the medicinal marijuana can be listed on a patient's chart. If I went to cardiac arrest and I was hospitalized and I would have to have any sort of surgery, I believe it's really important for the anesthesiologist to know if I've been using medicinal marijuana, at which dosage and which frequency. So I don't... So that doesn't affect me when I'm anesthetized. And then, other than that, I do believe, as other people have said, that the federal government will not be going after any hospital licenses if they are allowing medicinal marijuana into the hospital. And I think we should move beyond "don't ask, don't tell." Thank you very much.